We'll start with, I guess, you. You have seen council votes, whatever the votes. What's matter? Geraldine, do you feel all depth by your lonesome?
I do feel kind of solitude where no, like nobody, like, look, I got, I got stinky cheese. But I did shower today. Are these guys not coming? Pardon me, did he say anything about not coming?
All right, can everybody hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, we're about ready to start the meeting, so if I can get you to.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Oh, you can hear me.
There you go, now we're on. You pushed the button, I don't know what you did.
It's just my voice.
So, if I could have your, uh, attention, we will start, and our pastor tonight is, uh, I'd, Mick.
Mick.
Pastor Kim from the First Presbyterian Church, please, please stay in with me if you would.
Let us bow in prayer. Holy One, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, and Spirit of justice. We ask your blessing on the people who have been called to lead a community in which we live and work and play. Have them, as leaders, do not ask first, how do we fix this, but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And two, who do we need to listen? Remind them because we are all forgot from time to time, especially in the noiseless of what passed for political debate today. And they are not only readers, but also servants. And it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor. Our siblings and that throughout the ages, prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the rest of those among us. Grant them and us the, us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always are guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This we pray, in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true, may we be so. In the name of Christ we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. If you'd join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call this meeting to order, I might remind you, if you haven't, please sign the, the signing sheet so that the clerk can keep a record of everybody who's here. You get enough points in there, you get a gold star, I think. Attendance, agenda item number two is attendance roll call and determination of a quorum.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Alvedres?
Present.
Mr. Setzer? Ms. Sanchez?
Present.
Mr. Idson?
Here.
Ms. Hoffman? Mr. Petty? Mr. Shannon?
Here.
We've got a quorum.
Okay, I wanted to mention that, uh, there's my note, that Lynn Hoffman couldn't be here tonight. Her dad's in Phoenix, she's had to fly. Her dad's not doing well, so we want you to ask for y'all to keep him, keep her in your thoughts and prayers. And we pray for safe, safety in her travels. So, we'll go forward. Agenda item number three is public comments, does anybody have any public comments at this time? Anybody have any public comments? Anybody have any public comments? All right. Here's the good one. Agenda item number four is administration of votes of office. It's the new police officer, Andrew Malfris. If you'll come up front, we will. And if your wife would like to come up and stand next to you, we'd be picking her up. Or your special, your special other. He will be someday. Everybody this way. Raise your ID. Say aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the charter ordinances of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma.
And charter ordinances of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma.
I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly.
I will not receive knowingly, directly, or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing for the performance or non-performance.
Any money or other valuable thing for the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining, pertaining to my office.
Any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as a police officer to the best of my will.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as a police officer to the best of my will.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Come right here, we'll take pictures. Get everybody good step there. Chief, you want to get in here? Come on. For all your officers, everybody.
Very shame.
Let me sign this.
Thank you, officer.
Thanks, sir. Congratulations.
Sure.
You do the same. All right, agenda. Item number five is approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, item five.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Agenda item number six, discussion and possible action to approve ordinance number eight ninety-three. An ordinance amending section thirty-two dash two eighty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Guyman, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and declaring an emergency. The ordinance is attached, Ms. Martin will give us any updates on it. Anybody got any questions? Do you want to give us a reason for this?
Yes, good evening, um, so this ordinance is just updating the current tobacco ordinance that we currently have. That says eighteen and up. Uh, we haven't changed it since the law was changed, so that's all this is doing is saying that anybody under the age of twenty-one cannot purchase, receive, or have his/her possession of tobacco products.
And the agenda's, agenda's attached to your notes, or the ordinance.
Sorry, any questions?
Do you have questions? Motion?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number eight ninety-three and ordinance amending section thirty-two dash two eighty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Guyman, item six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
I make a motion and declare item six an emergency.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty-three dash nineteen. A resolution of the City of Guyman requesting O-MAG, the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, to apply workman's compensation escrow account funds in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars to the two, twenty twenty-four workman's compensation policy premium, premium. Resleece, resolution is attached in the O-MAG letters. Fairly standard, we just give rebate. Just put the rebate back in, on our accounts, so.
I make a motion, we approve resolution number twenty-three dash nineteen, a resolution of the City of Guyman, requesting O-MAG to apply workers' compensation escrow amount funds, the amount of two thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, to the twenty twenty-four workers' compensation policy premium, item seven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty-three dash twenty. A resolution adopting and implementing a workplace wellness policy in the City of Guyman. Ms. Martin, it's yours again.
Yes, sir, um, so what this is saying is that the city will make it available for options to live, uh, kind of healthy, so we will have healthy options whenever we do our meetings, or whenever we do any extracurricular activities outside of the work hours, as well as we will provide, you know, fresh water, we'll have opportunity for us to, uh, you know, participate in some activities that would help with, you know, whether it's running, or, you know, kind of getting your, your exercise in for the day. Um, this is not saying you cannot have these products, I know that that is a question. It's not saying you cannot have the snacks, the Snickers, most, that's what I heard the most, or your sodas. It's just saying when the city participates in it, that we will have healthy options available. And basically dedicating us to making sure that our community, as well as our staff here and ourselves, live, are living a little healthier. Certain questions?
Good luck with that. Make a motion, so we approve resolution number twenty-three dash twenty, resolution adopting and implementing a workplace wellness policy, City of Guyman, item eight.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to approve lease agreement with Anchor D Bank for four twenty twenty-three Dodge Chargers for the police department in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. Mr. Shannon?
It's about time to buy new police cars, and luckily, Chief, uh, found some cars and, uh, as I go through the invoices, uh, month of the last year and a half, uh, we need some new police cars. We spent a lot of money on old cars, but, uh, thankfully, we found the cars, and we'll have some more coming in next month, I think. Right, Chief?
Along those lines, what, what do we do with the, with the older ones? We, we, uh, put them up to forbid, or we purple wave them, or what do we do? We did, right? I was asked that again, that's why I wanted to put it on the record.
I wouldn't hear during the purple wave, but they, they sold like hotcakes. Unbelievable.
I make a motion that we approve lease agreement with Anchor D Bank for four twenty twenty-three Dodge Chargers for the, for the police department in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-four cents, item nine.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number ten is discussion and possible action to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement, the agreement between the City of Guyman and the Fraternal, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number One Twenty-Five for calendar year twenty twenty-four. Mr. Shannon?
We have come into an agreement, I'm the first one to say thank you for the, the, uh, police department or the Fraternal Order of Police. We had some really good meetings, I think both of us learned a lot, uh, and just settled on what's good for the City of Guyman and our police officers, so, thank you. Great negotiations, I thought. Piece of cake. I mean, a lot of people, you know, you hear the word union, it's, it, it's all what, what we make it out of, and with the quality of guys we've got on the department now, we sit down and, and like I told you, we just do what's right for the city, so. I enjoyed it. And Vicki, or Vicki, there's Vicki. Vicki did a lot of work on it too, so Vicki, thank you for your help also.
Thank you all. I make a motion that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the City of Guyman and Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number One Twenty-Five, calendar year twenty twenty-four, item ten.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number eleven, discussion and possible action to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the City of Guyman and the Professional Firefighters of Guyman, Local Forty-two Fifty-Six, the International Association of Firefighters, for calendar year twenty twenty-four. Again, Mr. Shannon?
And again, I'll, I'll just say again, it, it's nice to sit down with a group of, uh, professionals that, uh, uh, that cooperate, listen, uh, there's some give and take, and, and, uh, we made it all come together, so I appreciate their help. I don't think any of our union reps are here, no. You pass that along, Chief. Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the City of Guyman and Professional Firefighters of Guyman, Local Forty-two Fifty-Six, International Association of Firefighters, for calendar year twenty twenty-four, item eleven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number twelve, discussion and possible action to approve order of determination for lots seven, eight, and nine, block twenty-four, the park addition to the City of Guyman, also known as One Sixteen South Beaver. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Uh, this one's no different than any other, except I feel like the violations are a bit more serious than previous cases. Um, I have not had any contact from the owners after giving, following my due process. So, Code Enforcement recommends approving order of determination, and would like to start bid process for grass and trash abatement at One Sixteen South Beaver. Our estimated cost would be a thousand five hundred, and the work start date would be January tenth and completed by January twenty-fourth.
And you said the owner doesn't, hasn't contacted you?
No, ma'am. There are also no utilities under that address.
I motion to approve the order of determination for lots seven, eight, and nine on block twenty-four, park addition to the City of Guyman, AKA One Sixteen South Beaver.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number thirteen is discussion and possible action to approve order of determination for lot six in the north twenty feet of lot seven, block thirty-six, of the Stone Breakers Z addition, Guyman, Texas County, Oklahoma, also known as Fourteen Sixteen North Quinn. Yes, ma'am?
So, this case is a lot like our other cases we presented to y'all, um, only difference is I have gone every single letter excepted by the owner, except one, which did get returned to me, but everything else, the owner signed. I saw a little bit of change within the first couple of letters that I provided to the owner, but it's a rental house, so the tenants do move. They do change, and there are no current phone numbers, but, um, the grass and weeds are getting pretty, pretty tall to where it needs to be cut down, danger of anything getting in between it. Um, estimated cost for this would be, I would like to start the bid process, put out for notice of bids. Cost would be a thousand five hundred, estimated dates for works to be completed would be January tenth to January twenty-fourth.
Okay. Any questions?
You said this was a rental?
Yes.
What were the responses that the owner gave to you?
They signed every single certified letter I sent except one, that one did get returned to me. I have not been able to contact with the owner. I've looked on utilities, there is current utility from the property tenant, but there's no good phone number. I've tried knocking on the door, trying to get ahold of the tenant, but I cannot.
I'll motion to approve order of determination for lot six and the north twenty feet of lot seven, block thirty-six on the north, on the Stone Breakers Z addition, Guyman, Texas County, Oklahoma, AKA Fourteen Sixteen North Quinn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Thank you. Agenda item number fourteen is discussion and possible action to approve pay request number four in the amount of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents to United Golf LLC for the Sunset Hills Golf Course Irrigation Project. Mr. Shannon?
This brings to an end of our irrigation project that we started, uh, three months ago, maybe four. And, uh, by all accounts, I think that's probably one of the better things that's happened out at the golf course in a very long time. It was put in right, engineered correctly, to my knowledge, uh, everything looks, and engineers have signed off, we're ready for final payment. And we're saving water. It's up and running? Up and running, yes, sir.
Water conversation. That's.
Yep. Conservation, yeah, conservation of water.
In the conversations of water conservation.
There you go. I knew what you meant.
And soon we'll have, uh, you'll be able to have grass for us, and how, how much water it's actually saving, it's gonna, it's gonna be eye-opening, for sure.
Yeah, but preliminary right now, I mean, we're, we're saving close to a hundred gallons a minute right now, and we hadn't run it that much. So, yeah. All good.
I make a motion that we approve pay request number four in the amount of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars, twenty-five cents to United Golf LLC for the Sunset Hills Golf Course Irrigation Project, item fourteen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number fifteen is discussion and possible action to approve change order number two for a decrease of fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars to United Golf for the Sunset Hills Golf Course Irrigation Project.
We probably, probably acted on this one first, because this was a decrease, but the above amount was with that decrease taken out, so.
It's all good.
Yeah, it's all good. Especially when you decrease it.
Make a motion, we approve change order number two for the decrease of fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars to United Golf for the Sunset Hills Golf Course Irrigation Project, item fifteen.
Second.
Have a motion and a quick second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number sixteen is discussion and possible action to approve going out for bids for weeds and trash abatement contractors for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And here we go.
Okay, so, uh, we've been trying to minimize the timeline to get all of these abatements done, instead of waiting, for example, um, the One Sixteen South Beaver, the work wouldn't be done till January. However, if we were able to have a contractor for the fiscal year, then, in this case, the work would be started tomorrow. So, that would minimize it by a couple of months. So, if we're able to start the bid process, we'll be back to council by January ninth, and this is for strictly weeds and trash. All of the dilapidated wouldn't have to come through council.
That's pretty much the way we did it in years past.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, discussions?
Make a motion, we approve going out for bids for weeds and trash abatement contractor, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, item sixteen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Yes, we have no new business, we stand adjourned. We're gonna reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. Everybody there? Okay, we done it. Called it to order, we done the attendance roll call, agenda item number three, is there anybody who'd like to make any public comments? Anybody like to make public comments?
Got one in the bag.
Oh, well, come up, oh, well, come on, Tracy, come on.
My bad.
It's always good when you talk, though, Tracy. Oh, okay. Okay. Agenda item number four is approve, approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion, approve consent agenda number four.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to approve park yard engineering agreements for the scope of services with Max Fries for the following design survey. Twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Engineering designs, fifty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Bid administration, eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. Construction administration, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And resident project representative, twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars for the Guyman Highway Sixty-four ODOT waterline relocation project. Mr. Shannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Tracy? You want to stand up and talk about this? Yes. While, while Mr., uh, Tracy is walking up to the microphone, I make a couple of little comments here. Uh, you go ahead first, I'll make mine towards the end.
So, we're wanting to redo the Highway Sixty-four, South Twelve, so, we've got a water line, it's a three-inch transite water line, and it needs to be moved. It's in the right way, so we're gonna put sidewalks through there. They want us to be outside of the sidewalk, and I'm from underneath, so, uh, it, it's a project that my crew can't do in a timely manner, so, we just need to go up for bids, get it done, and we're, we want to do an engineering line to get it moved. I've, I've been talking. I've been talking with, we do have a gas line, but there are other situations there, we're gonna take care of that, and I talked with them today about that, and just explained that to them, so that's what this is about, they just want us to move that water line up from underneath sidewalk, back in the right way.
And I just wanna add just a little bit to that, this all be funded by the Department of Transportation, and Mayor, I wanna compliment you, raised a little bit of concerns with the right kind of people, and got this done for us, and, because this project, I don't know what it's gonna cost, we had a previous project, we had to remove some water lines, close to a million dollars, and got stuck with that one, but there were some things, basically, I'll just call it right out, lobbied up, and for the city of Guyman, and we thank you for what you did, because this not gonna cost us nothing, once we get reimbursed.
Yeah, once we get reimbursed.
Exactly.
Is this all down sixty-four, I mean, the twelve?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be from May twelfth all the way down to, this goes to Cramley, this, this line that is in question will go to Cramley.
Gotcha.
And it's a three-inch service line, no longer there.
But tow ODOT will just be the whole twelve street from where it connects on both ends,
Any other questions?
When will they start this project? When will they start this project?
They haven't given me a timeline, I've asked them about my gas line, I haven't received a timeline yet on that. I think they're wanting to let bids in 2027, aren't they?
I think so.
I think that's what it is, they're giving us plenty of time to get it moved.
And, and the project I was talking about where it took, we had to relocate the, it took five years for ODOT to go ahead and start the project on one thirty-six. Almost five years to the day. They had their first public hearing, so twelve street's probably off maybe three or four years.
And as far as we know, this is the only one in question right now, I mean, we have some other crossings, but I think those should be deep enough, that was all done back in, I can't remember the year that this was all done, it was back in the sixties, I think it was all over before. The gas line is the only thing in question, and we're gonna take care of that, it has to do with things, so this is a fatal, this is definitely a separate project.
On these bids, scope of work, has anybody seen if the walkways are on both sides of the road?
So we do have a map and drawing of that, I think they're going on both sides down to a certain amount, I think they'll go on the south side, it goes all the way, and then on the north side, it goes down to, I think somewhere around West Room Equilin, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Understood. Outstanding, thank you.
And all the drainage will be done, too.
Gotcha, that'll be upgraded. It's gonna be good. Yeah, definitely. Make a motion, we approve. Thank you. Park yard engineering agreement scope of services with max fees for the following design survey, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, engineering design, fifty-eight thousand, six hundred, bid administration, eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-four, construction administration, six thousand, seven hundred and fifty, resident project representative, twenty-three thousand, five hundred for the Guyman Highway sixty-four ODOT waterline relocation project, item five.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Heitzen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four eyes.
Agenda item number six, discussion on possible action to award bid for the new center non-to pivot irrigation system to Panhandle Irrigation LLC of Guyman, Oklahoma for ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and seven and seventy-six cents. This is an upgrade to on our late rule.
On our land application, yes, sir. I'm just curious, how many millions of gallons that O went through?
Uh, one short of mine, and we're going by five hundred thousand, we could go up there today.
Yeah.
This is an old pivot, we've had some issues with it, it's one of the.
It's one of the original, yeah.
Around thirty years old.
Yeah, it's one of the old original pivots we put out there.
We only had two bids on this, and this was the reason we wanted to take this one, it's a little bit thicker metal, it's supposed to withstand the tranks better, so that's why we went with that, it was just two local bids, is all we had.
Any questions, motion?
Make a motion to award bid for the new center non-to pivot irrigation system to Panhandle Irrigation LLC of Guyman, Oklahoma for ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Heitzen.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four eyes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion on possible action on awarding bids for the sale of the residential gas meters.
We didn't have any bids on the gas meters.
Okay, no bids. Why don't you stay up here?
And we didn't have any bids, we reached out to several gas meter companies that rebuilt these signs, no one wanted the small residential meters, they wanted our bigger ones, but we kept the bigger ones and were the endpoints on them, so we didn't have big ones to sell.
Okay. So we'll just table it.
Make a motion, we.
Oh, I'm sorry, what are we gonna do with them?
Well, I think we're gonna go through some of them, so.
Retro.
My meters are fifty-two weeks out, some of the endpoints are twenty-seven weeks out, so I think we're gonna through there, I think we've got twenty brand new ones in stock, we'll go through and pick out about thirty of the best ones, get them rebuilt, get endpoints for them, because, I mean, it's getting ridiculous on getting parts for fifty-two week weight on some of these gas meters.
Crazy.
We think some won't stand by, so that's what we're planning on doing. Hopefully it'll give us five.
Make a motion, we table, item seven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Heitzen.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four eyes.
Agenda item number eight, discussion on possible action on awarding bid for the sale of surplus scrap brass water meters.
We reached out to several dealers on this, I think I reached out to six, seven of them, they all wanted to bid on it, but I think we ended up with three bids, two of them didn't have the affidavit and the insurance, so SNL was the only one that had all the proper stuff, and told them, staff recommendation.
That would be it, recommend to take the dollar seven a pound.
Aye, dollar seven.
Make a motion that we award bid for the sale of surplus scrap brass water meters, item eight.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Heitzen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four eyes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion on possible action to approve change order number one for an increase of four thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-two cents, and an additional six days to Gates Utilities LLC for the Northeast Ground Storage Tank Project. If you haven't driven out by, it's there, except it just isn't painted yet.
Looks good. They don't, they don't mess around.
We've, I had this, this little bit off the subject, we'll throw it out here, I've had a visit with Mr. Chairman, I've had a couple of other people talk to me about it, Sid said, about maybe if we're doing logos on these, one of these new tanks, and we put like the Guyman type in the, in the, on it, show a little support for the kiddos, but I'll leave that up to Mr. Chairman. So anyway.
We recommend, staff recommends for the change order.
Make a motion, we approve change order number one, increase four thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars, seventy-two cents, and additional six days to Gates Utilities LLC for the Northeast Ground Storage Tank Project, item nine.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Heitzen.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four eyes.
Agenda item number ten is discussion on possible action to approve application for payment number three for Gates Utilities LLC in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents for the Northeast Ground Storage Tank Project.
Staff recommends the payment for number three. We're not too far off getting painted and filling full of water.
Make a motion, we approve application for payment, payment number three, Gates Utilities LLC, amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars, thirty-two cents, Northeast Ground Storage Tank Project, item ten.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Heitzen.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four eyes.
Agenda item number eleven is discussion on possible action to approve application for payment number two for Caldwell Tanks Incorporated in the amount of four hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents for the three-hundred-thousand-gallon elevated water storage tank project.
Staff also recommends for this payment, you'll see where the engineering has signed off, and we recommended the payment of four hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-two, twenty, or thirty-eight.
Make a motion that we approve application for payment number two for Caldwell Tanks Incorporated, in the amount of four hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents for the three-hundred-thousand-gallon elevated water storage tank project, item eleven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Heitzen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four eyes.
Agenda item number twelve is discussion on possible action on approving the certificate of incumbency between the Guyman Utilities Authority and the BOKF NA, doing business as Bank of Oklahoma, as trustees. Mr. Chairman.
Just updating the records, new people's come on board, it's, it's not a signature card, but it's for us to do business with the BOK and our signatures.
Make a motion, we approve the certificate of incumbency between the Guyman Utilities Authority and BOKF, DBA Bank of Oklahoma, as trustees, item twelve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Heitzen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four eyes.
Agenda, agenda item number thirteen, we have no new business, agenda item fourteen, reports from city manager and councillor.
I've got a couple of things, our highway project, the ODOT's doing Highway fifty-four, I, I've got a, a number here of our local onsite engineer slash inspector, her name is Tanya, I think Tanya's been with ODOT quite a few years, if you have any problems or concerns, I've got her telephone number here, I'll, I'll pass this out, but she's been real, real easy to work with, you call her within hours or minutes, something's taken care of, I think Michael and the police department and the fire department both know what we're talking about, because they've been on scene quite a, quite a few times, but here's her number, I'll pass this down if y'all have anything, or just give me a shout, and I'll, I'll call Tanya and get.
Is that public info here, or is that?
What does she share with us?
Oh, I think it is, I mean, gosh, yeah, she welcomes the call, and you can even leave her a message, she, she gets right on it, so that's for the council itself. It's going rather well, there's been some little mishaps, but I think everything is going well on that project, so you just have, okay. The next thing I want to touch on is a little bit, next, next month's meeting will be presenting you the operating budget for 2024, we've started working on it for a month and two weeks into work on it, we just finalized, if we had everything put together and had it on the agenda, we could have looked at it tonight, but I will tell you, the budget will be ready for presentation, some preliminary numbers, it's a forty-seven million dollars worth of revenue with forty-three million dollars' worth of expenditures. What I want to bring to your attention is, oh, here it is, we've got a lot of, and this includes some of the high priority capital improvement stuff, what I'd like to propose and get, start to thinking about, we have three or four different items right now that we really, we're behind the eight ball, we should have been started on these probably ten, fifteen years ago. We're, we're starting to put some net, uh, numbers together right now for streets, as everybody in this whole entire room knows that our streets here in Guyman, they need some attention, there's right at ninety miles of streets here in town, so, and we're, we're working up a program to a, to offer a capital improvement program at ninety miles, and I'll, I'll just gonna throw out some preliminary numbers, that's close to a hundred and fifty million dollars if it was bid out in one time, that, that, that's a lot of money. Our sanitation department, our transfer station that was built close to thirty years ago, Trace, probably, right at thirty years ago, it, it's wore out, it's wore out, and it's really understaffed, or not understaffed, it's, we're making more trash today than we were thirty years ago, it just needs to be made larger, and we're talking, and some other improvements, the capital improvements at the sanitation department, we're talking probably twenty-five million dollars' worth of expenditures there. Wastewater, this is a big thing that a lot of people, and I, probably me included, really don't think about, our, our lagoons are filling up with solids. Lagoons are for evaporation, but they're also there to hold water when we cannot land apply. Tracy, I'm gonna go out on a limb here and say probably half of our water storage is probably taken up by solids, at least half, and it's putting us in, it's putting our departments in a pretty peculiar position, because we've, we've gotta get rid of that water, we don't want it running over the bank, so we're looking into dredging the, the sludge out of that, and that is costly, very costly, we've got some preliminary estimates around fifty million, I mean, it seems like million is just the, the word to say anymore. Of course, our parks, and when I say parks, I'm talking everything from city parks to rodeo arenas, soccer complex, baseball fields, everything that has to do with a, a city parks, they're old, except the soccer complex, they're old, they need the attention, we've had some public meetings about what the, the public would like to see, and it's mainly, let's just take care of what we've got, maybe just upgrade what we have, and we're looking at thirty million to, to do that project, and the most important thing right now is our water project, that we're continually, the, you'll be seeing that project come to next month, and, and I've rolled the, the water project in with some other infrastructure, and we're talking fifty million there, so we're looking at three hundred million dollars' worth of stuff that needs to be done soon, when I say soon, like now, staff's developing a, a, will be a plan, come, come to city council, probably the next sixty, ninety days, with, with a full-fledged plan, how to address this expenditure. Now, streets, like I said, I mean, we got streets that are older than Tracy and me, probably older than a lot of people, but we're, we're, we've gotta do something to our streets, we have to do something to our streets, right now, we're just, we're just trying to stay even, as you'll see, the budget, I mean, we've just been, I don't wanna say crippled along, but we're just spending enough money to just keep everything even, we need to start improving, we need, and this right here, this capital improvement program is gonna be a good start, it's a lot of money, but now's the time to start addressing. I'll have a, a balanced budget for you the next, in December meeting, it'll be ready to go, when we get it all put together, what I'd like to do is maybe get maybe one or two of you, meet with you individually, before that meeting, I think our December meeting is the fourteenth, somewhere, the second Tuesday, and I'm willing to sit down a couple to three hours with each individual and go over the entire budget with you. Yeah. Twelfth, twelfth of December. That's all I got.
That's all you got? Anybody else? We're good.
I don't have anything, Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
I have nothing.
Well, I've got a couple of things, and, and I'm gonna send this to Mike, and y'all may have got it, he just showed, I got a, I got an email from Miranda Gilbert, did you get that, Mike?
Yeah.
Did you get that?
I did.
Okay.
Go to spam.
Did you get one?
No, I think you went to spam.
Okay, anyway, it's, it's about opportunities this year to the state for arts and humanities type functions, different things like that. It's very lengthy, I, I basically scanned over her emails, pretty lengthy, but it, it, it looks like it could be the solution to a lot of the things that some of the folks in the arts community are working on now and have been working on, so I'll, I will make sure everybody's got that. Anybody wants a copy of it, get ahold of me or Mike or Levona, and we'll, we'll send it to you digitally. But it, it gives some funding opportunities for some different summer activities for kids and other things, and community art, whatever. And everybody needs to, we, we threw two of them tonight, one of the things that I've had some discussion with a couple of our, of our firemen, the concern over all of the fuel that we've got laying on the ground. We had a wonderful wet summer, but we got weeds that are four and five and six foot tall, and they died now, and they're just waiting on a spark. And so if you've got those weeds around your house, clean them up. It might be the difference between losing your house, or our guys getting there and putting it out and saving it. And also, it makes your neighborhood look better, but if you've got any property in town that has those weeds on it, take care of it. We don't, our, our wonderful ladies from code enforcement, they would really rather be hiding from Mike than doing what they have to do all day long, but rather than being out harassing people.
We're hiding behind the grass.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, you're doing a great job, but, but everybody could jump in and help on this project, 'cause, 'cause what, that'll make Guyman look better and make it a safer place to live. And that's all I got. So at this time, anybody got any public comments? Last time, we're enjoying.
Happy Thanksgiving.